You guys ready?
Okay.
All right. Good evening. Call the meeting to order at 5:33. Please just stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item up on the agenda is public comment. On agenda items only. If anybody has any public comment, please feel free to come up. Public comment is 30 minutes max, two minutes per person. I implore you to please try to keep your comments to two minutes. When you please come up to the microphone, state your name.
Hello. I'm Joanne Schofield, President and CEO of Mentor Rhode Island. We've had the privilege of operating the Warwick Mentor Program in Warwick Public Schools for over 30 years. I want to just thank the committee for including $25,000 in the operational budget for this valuable program. We're right now, as of this week, at 99 young people being served one-to-one with volunteer mentors from the community. So, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all of your support, for all of the work that happens in the schools and behalf of the children that we serve. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Darlene Netco, lifelong resident of Warwick, graduate of Warwick Public Schools, Greenwood-Winman, Tolgate. Teacher of 33 years in this district, 35 years in the classroom overall, teaching secondary English, currently high school. Homeowner, taxpayer, voter, and president of the Warwick Teachers Union. And I just want to reiterate what I said the other night, since this is a new meeting, that I'm pleased to see that the budget includes new special ed positions. They are sorely needed, especially for the elementary level. We do need a special ed certified early childhood coordinator for Welk. We do need many other items. I know last year, the district cut professional development money, and all of that was cut, was not put back. So, that is something that should be in, but it's something the district has cut in favor of putting in other things like this. I would rather see the special ed position. So, I just hope that the school committee and the administration works with the mayor and the city council to make sure our budget gets passed. And I, of course, as I said the other night, will do my part, as I always have. And thank you. Let's get this budget to the city, and let's get it passed for the students of Warwick, because that's why we're all here. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hello. Jeremy Langel. Sorry. 5:30 is hard to get here. I just wanted to say, I read through the budget, and I saw the items related to conscious discipline, and I was really excited about that. So, for those of you not familiar with conscious discipline, it's a fantastic program. Definitely helps me to be a better parent, and I hope that there's an avenue for getting parents the training as well. I know the preschool that we were at in California before moving here, they actually had trainings for parents, and it was a lifesaver. So, I'm anxious to see that, you know, training for our teachers as well, and then would there be opportunities to also, you know, have that practically on the ground, especially for parents of younger kids? Which is where I found that that was really useful. It's useful for adolescents as well, but especially for younger kids. The other reason I came tonight was because I was surprised by Monday's meeting with the delay. And I just, I wanted to say that it surprised me primarily because the motion, I think, that was on the table had to do with being in violation of policies. And when that question was directed to the attorney, the attorney stated that there was no violation of policies in terms of the meeting you were having on Monday. When I watched that, I thought to myself, great, we're gonna table that motion and go back to your meeting. Because on the stage, there's only one person whose legal opinion matters. Out of, no disrespect to anybody else on the stage, but only one person went to law school and passed the bar exam and is a practicing attorney. So, if that person says that you're not in violation of policy, then that's really what matters. It comes down, for me, as someone who's watching the meeting, it comes down to a question of credibility. Right? Because there's one person who has the experience and the credibility to address that. So, I was very surprised when the attorney said, "You're not in violation," and yet the motion still passed. And that was very strange to me. Only because, again, there's one person up there who has that experience. And that makes me nervous, frankly. I spent most of my career in the nonprofit world, sitting here, where the staff put a lot of time into a budget, which then goes to a board, right? But having spent most of my career on the staff side preparing budgets for boards, I found Monday's turn of events to be out of order and a little bit troubling. So, I hope that tonight, you know, that there'll be a normal process and good questions, you know, and a respect for the relationship between staff and the school committee. That's very important to me, as someone who has been here many, many years. So, that's all I have to say. I look forward to, I actually have to go back home and make dinner. But I will watch it on YouTube and look forward to seeing this budget passed. And I'll just say, you know, realistically, I know this budget, you're all gonna be back here again in June, right? Because it's gotta go to city council and everything. So, this is not the end, right? Where all the questions have to be asked, right? This is a long process, so I hope that we don't have any delays tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Unfinished business is discussion, action, FY '24 Superintendent Recommended Budget. As from the other night, the way we typically do this is members are, we'll start, one member at a time, are free to go to specific line items to ask questions, propose changes, additions, subtractions, keep it the same. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to any one of my colleagues, whoever wishes to begin. Mr. Galligan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to say thank you to the members of the administration and everyone up here on the stage who has been very helpful over the past three days in getting the information required so that tonight we could feel confident in each and every line item that we are voting on. I also just want to provide a point of clarification. This past Monday, I was, I just wanted to make it clear. I was not challenging my colleague to my left. I have tremendous respect for our chair. He's been on the school committee for a while. He's been through several budgets. We're gonna vote on many line items in several meetings throughout the year, and we're likely not to agree. With respect to the comments just made, I was not challenging the legality of the policy. Certainly, the policies are reviewed by an attorney and the policy subcommittees and then put forth. Rather, I was looking at, do I have the information necessary to vote on the budget? So, I respect Attorney Hennessy, and I respect his background and his knowledge and his education and years of experience. But the fact of the matter was, you know, this is fact. There were items which I was missing, so I was not able to proceed. That is the fact of it. It's within the policy. I'm not challenging the legality of the policy. So, I just wanted to provide that point of clarification. And I also just want to make one final remark on Monday evening's proceedings. To me, Monday evening, it's not a story, right? The chair and I, as well as my colleagues to the right, were going to disagree on points. It's gonna happen. And that's it. That's what it was. I believe we did it in a professional enough manner, and that's all I'll say to that. I won't address Monday any further. Tonight, we have the budget before us. Within the same week as the Monday meeting, I feel confident we're gonna pass this budget. I'm confident in the line items now of the budget, and I have all the information to now ask pertinent questions. So, with that stated, the first, I'm gonna pass on personnel with the exception of just asking Ms. Ruggieri to just confirm that the 17 and a half ads on the Y side and the 15.2 ads, as well as the 1.5 admin ads, all of those and the associated salary of $1.9 million approximately is captured within our salary line item. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that is correct. However, I do need to clarify one thing. We have to make an educated estimate on salaries for teachers, so I used a step five. We may have more come in closer to step 10, more come in closer to step 1. So, I just kind of made a middle-of-the-road estimate.
Fantastic. So, that line item could be, we could be over-budgeting in that line item, or it could be under-budgeted?
Correct.
Thank you for that. And then, associated with all of those ads, the $146,372.87 FICA and Medicare, that is associated within the line items on the fringe benefits?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, turning it over to my recommended cuts at this time. Code 5739, technology-related hardware.
But just hold on. The 57309? Okay. 57309. Yep.
14-inch teacher Chromebooks, Phase 2.1. Before I speak to this, Mr. Taylor, can you let me know, do we do anything with the Chromebooks when they're at end of life? Do we try to, do we try to turn them over to an entity and maybe get, even if it's $50 or $100 per unit?
Yes and no, right? So, we definitely do something with the Chromebooks. The last two years, every Chromebook we take back, be it a 14-inch teacher Chromebook or an 11-inch student Chromebook, our technicians go through and remove any parts that we can remove that would help fix breakage throughout the school department. So, that's what's helped to drive down the parts line for Chromebooks from what used to be $180,000 now down below $100,000, because we're saving so much on parts. So, we do that.
Okay. Mr. Galligan also adds that when a Chromebook reaches end of life, that's property that gets turned over to the city, right? We have a whole policy about turning that. So, we don't really have the, necessarily have the ability to sell it, to generate revenue for ourselves. It has to go through the city process, and it's up to them to allow us as to whether or not they'll let us do that or not.
And right now, the city approves our e-wasting of the technology. An end-of-life Chromebook, we like to get out of circulation as soon as possible, because no longer can it be updated with any recent security updates. So, we like to not use that for much longer.
And I know what our cycle is for transitioning out laptops, but what would you consider outside of that to be end-of-life?
Usually, Chromebooks are good for three to four years. Usually, brand-new Chromebooks last, we find, about four years. It depends on the particular model of Chromebook, but that's the average, about four years. So, that's why we use them for students for four years, same thing with faculty and staff. And what you see in there for 14-inch Chromebooks, that covers any new hires that we have, that every new hire now gets a device, which is very important. And then also, those devices that are end-of-life for our faculty and staff, so they can keep doing the work in the classrooms.
Yeah. Great. I'm gonna, I noticed that you've also have in there substitutes as well, so the new teachers' substitutes. Before I propose my cut here, I'm gonna let you know that I'm gonna turn this Chromebook over to you tonight, so that way you can go on and give it to someone else. But tonight, I would be making the motion to cut this line item by a third, $17,500.
Motion on the table to cut line 57309 by 17.5. I'll second it.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? I don't have a problem with this. This is also a line I identified as well. I have a little more. So, let me just, let me ask Mr. Hennessy. I'm inclined to just do, everybody do this one at a time. So, if I want to do this line, then I'll go back and, if I wanted to take more out of the line, I'll go back and just take my amount of that difference.
That's fine.
Because it'll get too confusing, right?
Yeah. As long as we document the process and it's clear what the end result is.
Okay. Any discussion on Mr. Galligan's proposal to reduce that by $17,500? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Taylor, don't shoot me. 57309, again. USB-C to VGA HDMI display adapters for Chromebooks. Justification stating these are adapters to help teachers connect their Chromebooks, projectors, and Promethean boards. But I noticed that we had a large volume of units. Budgeted $10,500 for this line item. Are we able to use Amazon as a vendor?
Yep, absolutely. So, let me, I can walk you through a little bit there. So, each year annually, we go out to bid for what's called the single-source technology bid. We do it around now for the next school year, so we did this around now, fiscal 2022. We found that the, we had two bidders for these devices. One was at $57 per device, and the other was at $37.30 for the device. But looking at Amazon, I find that they range from like $16 to $20 per device. So, that $30 just tries to take the average of those two. The only concern I sometimes have out of Amazon, and I'll always equate it to phone chargers. You know, like if I get a phone charger from Apple, it's more money. My wife might get phone chargers from Five Below, and she goes through four, and I go through one. So, what we find is the quality we get's a little bit better than what we find off of Amazon. But yes, the answer to your question, which came to light from Ms. Quirk, our purchasing manager, is that we can use Amazon because of the Omnia single-source consortium. So, we can purchase off of there. But that's an explanation on the cost.
I really appreciate that. And yes, and just using your descriptor in a quick search, I did see the $16 to $21.99 cost. So, based on the fact that I think, rather than rushing into, you know, using our chairman's words from last year's meetings, and also the former chair's comments, that we really have to, it's looking like we're nickeling and diming it, but this is what it's come down to, right? So, anywhere where we can nickel and dime just a little bit to open up a little bit more capital in the scheme of things will be good. So, based on the fact that just, there's an opportunity to maybe save a little bit more money on this particular line item, I'm going to make a motion that we reduce this line item by $3,150 from the budgeted $10,500.
Or second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I have just one question, Ms. Galligan. If you want to, you can, there's two ways you can do this. You can go on the individual components within the line, or you can just do the whole line. It's up to you. If you just wanted to take what your total from 57309 was, and you can just make a motion to do one big amount. But it's entirely up to you. So, all right. No other discussion. I'll call the vote for a further reduction of $31,150. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for the clarification on how we can vote on these. I might just continue to go line item by line item. There's not a lot of them here because of the information that was provided the past two days. So, Mr. Taylor can continue to give some justification on a few of these, as well as some of the other department owners. The next one would also be 57309, technology-related hardware. Miscellaneous classroom and school hardware needs. Budgeted amount, $10,000. Based on looking at the total technology budget, and then on the superintendent's kind of like header page, seeing the increase for the technology line item of hardware. Obviously, it's one that stands out. And the justification was various unforeseen hardware needs, which includes such things as additional replacements and those mentioned above, or peripherals needed to make current devices work, Promethean pens, replacement adapters of cables, et cetera. I just think that looking at the budget in its entirety under that section, there's a lot of stuff there. So, I don't see us probably using all of that same day, right? So, you're probably gonna have some spare parts or whatever. I don't feel, be prudent that we eliminate the entire line, even though you have all those other lines there to kind of support the needs of the technology department. So, I'm only making a motion to reduce this line item from $10,000 to $5,000.
Okay. So, there's a motion to reduce 57309 by an additional $5,000? Or second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I couldn't, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Please.
And just to, you know, highlight something that I think's very important for certainly the public to understand as well, is upon passing on June 30th, you know, fiscal year's July 1, we would never go out and just buy boxes of cables and adapters. This is what we would use throughout the year, because it's irresponsible just to buy a bunch of stuff if we're not certain. And so, these lines, you know, for an example, the proposed cut on this $10,000, this is where if we needed more of those VGA adapters, because we just cut those, that they would come out of, you know, this other pool of money. So, here you find all the things that a charger breaks. That happens hundreds of times for faculty and staff throughout the year. Pens break. You know, there's a lot of little pieces there. So, that's the reason for that. That's why it's kind of a vague description, but it's as the things pop up. But if at the end of the year, to your point, Mr. Galligan, we only spent $3,000, we wouldn't use up the whole amount.
Yeah. That's a sensible response, and one thing I would just say is that we could possibly do transfers throughout the year if capital's there for below budget on some other items. It'd be better, obviously, to budget more, you know, in this particular line item than we need. However, you guys have been doing this a lot longer than I, so you know that at the end of this month, when it goes before the city council, they're gonna be shaving down anyways. So, if we could put a realistic amount in front of them, and then figure out as we go on throughout the year, if we need to transfer over, obviously, you know, if it's gonna impact a teacher from educating and administrator from administering, or a child from learning, that would justify a transfer absolute all day long.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, we're voting on this. We didn't vote on this yet. What do you want to speak? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm gonna owe you dinner. Yeah. I'm sorry, man. I'm sorry. Next line item, 57309.
Yep.
It's a topic near and dear to my heart. The district's core data center hardware cybersecurity. Now, this is a big one, Mr. Taylor. It's $150,000. So, I imagine that we probably have some formalized projects with a scope, and that we've probably already gone out to bid on some of these servers and whatnot.
Correct. Yes. So, that's something that, you know, I would strongly urge consideration. And our total data center, to redo our entire data center would be over $1 million. And so, every year, we set aside money to continuously improve the servers in the data center, the connections within the data center, engineering hours to reconfigure the data center. And every year, we've gotten into that habit of placing that same amount of money, and that goes exactly, as you said, to projects. Some of those are planned for. Some of those may occur in September when servers die, and a new server is $30,000. So, it really does, you know, to not put that forward each year would just cause us in a few years to not really thank our today selves for doing that. So, that's my recommendation there.
Thank you. And have we considered, I know we need to have local, equipment local to the facilities. Have we considered tier-one data centers off-site and working within a cloud environment?
Absolutely, yes. So, actually, the school committee approved in December a project that's currently in progress as we speak, which is to virtualize, we have 24 or so servers, hard servers, and we're virtualizing a majority of those to the cloud. We still have on-prem servers that we need to take care of. But yes, that's already begun. That transition's already begun. You'll see further down a subscription for cloud backup, and that's exactly what you're talking about.
And how far along percentage-wise are we in that project?
Probably, you know, as we sit here today, there's been nothing virtualized yet. But we're in the early stages, so we're probably a third of the way through the process, but without having shifted anything to the cloud yet, because it's being built as we speak.
And by your estimation, how far do you think we are out from being within that environment?
We'll probably be able by the end of this school year, by June 30th, be done with that first phase of shifting to that cloud. Again, the servers that have been identified for that purpose.
Okay.
And we would like to add to that each year going forward, is to continue to virtualize as much as we can.
And this project supports the on-prem servers until we go fully cloud-based and to tier-one data centers off-site?
Correct. This line would support the on-prem servers should we need more of those. It also would support the engineering and the work to move more of those servers to the cloud. Both of those pieces come. And also, the other piece to hear is cybersecurity. There's some plans for increased cybersecurity services in this line. That would be addition, kind of new to the district.
Okay.
And that stuff tends to be in line, too, with requirements that we need to meet for cyber insurance and the like.
Matt stated no proposed cuts to that one.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Give you a break for a second.
Thank you.
Stand by. Don't pass it off too far. Line item fifty-three-four-oh-nine, negotiations arbitration. For the public's knowledge, today in speaking with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, as well as our director of finance, they're very kind in kind of assisting us with this process, and knowing that we have a fairly big ask of the city, and basically stating, you know we need to make cuts to get it to a manageable figure, and they proposed a few. So this line item here was a proposed cut, and it is budgeted for fifty thousand dollars, and it was stated that we can reduce this line item by twenty-five thousand dollars. So, Mr. Chair, I'm making the motion to reduce this line item from fifty thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I don't have a problem. I've had the same conversation as you did, so I'd like to thank Mr. Hennius for his magnanimity. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Next one for me is fifty-three-four-oh-two, legal services. This is another one that was offered up to us, budgeted for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Chair, I'm making the motion at this time to cut fifty thousand dollars from this line item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next one, I just need clarification on. Line item fifty-three-four-oh-three, health service providers, athletic trainers per bid, Nest concussion baseline testing and assessment, budgeted fifty thousand dollars. There's two of these. Mr. Ricks, would these be for two full-time athletic trainers at both Tollgate and Pilgrim with Nest?
The... Well, the current ask has been whittled down. It was at... The contract with Nest is for one fifty-three. Right now, I believe we've budgeted at a hundred per cuts. So no, we would not get two trainers out of that.
Out of the two fifty thou... We have two of them.
Correct.
So that would be the budget, a hundred thousand, and you're saying the current contract's at a hundred and fifty-three thousand?
Yes, the current... Well, the contract that we have with Nest calls for a hundred and... It might be a hundred and forty-eight plus... Or a hundred and forty-nine plus three for baseline testing. So it includes the software for baseline testing for concussions.
Does that line item... Does that service have an athletic trainer on premise Monday through Friday at both facilities for games? Or is it that Monday, Wednesday at one facility, Tuesday at the...
Yes, so that's probably would have to happen again, the same theory that we had this year, where we'd have a trainer go Monday, Wednesday at Tollgate, and Tuesday, Thursday at Pilgrim, and then hockey games and football games on Friday nights as would necessitate.
Are we in contract with Nest to a point where we couldn't break the contract without penalty? Or are we able to break the contract at any point?
I can read you what the contract states verbatim. I'm not a... Mr. Hennius, if we have an answer that better. I looked at the couple line items to see exactly where that stood. If you give me one second, please. So on page four of the strength and conditioning bid, so just so you have the exact number for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, it was one fifty-one-four-twenty-four in the contract. It says, "Warrick Public Schools will conduct a yearly review to ensure the district is receiving the services that we seek. While this is a three-year agreement, the agreement is contingent upon review of services as well as financial stability." So that's what it reads.
And the equipment in-house, is that owned by the school department, or is that owned by Nest?
So the strength and conditioning equipment is owned by our district, yes.
Okay. And as well as the treatment equipment?
That's correct.
Okay, great. The chair's going to kill me. So this line item's budgeted at a hundred thousand dollars, and in this case here, I'm going to make a motion to actually increase this line item by sixty thousand dollars. And I'm making this motion because obviously, people have seen in, you know, in the news over the past several months, how polarizing the incident with Damar Hamlin in the NFL, how that was a freak incident, perfect timing in his chest. I think that we really need to be... If we're going to have athletics here in the city of Warwick, we really need to be looking at having people on premise Monday through Friday when all games are going on. And I think that if we can move towards having two part-time sports medicine individuals on-site that can offer us the same services as Nest does, and provide us coverage every day, I think that that would be the more appropriate step. I'm hesitant to approve partial coverage, right? Because emergencies don't pick and choose when they're going to occur. So you could have something happen on a Tuesday, and the athletic trainer's at the other facility. And so I think that if this school district is bought into athletics, and we want to kind of mitigate our liabilities and have the appropriate sports medicine people on premise, I think it would be great to have two sports medicine individuals brought in-house under the athletics department. You know, whether that be one to nine, I don't know. You guys can work that out, or two to seven, however it needs to go. But I think increasing that by sixty thousand dollars is appropriate for...
Mr. Gallagher, but could I just recommend that you make your motion to fund it to the one fifty-four-oh-twenty-four that was originally asked for?
Yeah, that works.
Is that okay?
That works.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't. And Mr. Ricks, I would tell you, and we've had a conversation, what we're going to see in the future is more and more districts are going to be hiring their own trainers. That's happening. That's coming. So, you know, when it hits here, I don't know. I would just say, you know, every year's a hope springs eternal. So for next year, you know, you think maybe you might want to... Maybe we do one trainer and a Nest for the other, you know, just try to be as creative as possible. So, all right, so the motion is to increase the line item to one by fifty-four thousand and twenty-four dollars?
Yes.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Gruvich.
I agree with... I agree with everything you said. I'm just nervous for adding sixty thousand dollars right now.
Yep, and I would say that I share that, but I don't think this is a bad add. And again, we're not done. We've just begun here, so we could always... I see you looking at me, Mr. McGrath. So, you know, there are some things that I can do here that I may revise on mine, too, to try to get some of that back. But, you know, at the end of the day, we have one more bite at this apple in June. So, you know, if, you know, depending on what the landscape looks like then, we can revisit this then. So, you know, again, I wouldn't say go add five million dollars, but, you know, fifty-four thousand, I don't think that's that big of an issue, so I would support it. Anyone else? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Me. Aye.
You're an aye? You're opposed?
As of right now.
You're an aye?
At the second.
All right, that's fine. Just for the record. Okay, so motion carries three-one.
The next line item is fifty-three-four-ten, looking for clarification on police and fire details from Mr. McGrath. When would we use these police and fire details? Because if it's a circumstance where there's facility rental, aren't those costs billed back to the individual renting the facility, or are these police and fire details external from that? Like, not associated with it?
Not associated with those.
That's good for me.
Yeah, these are... Any other event, because you're correct, we do build those services out, depending on the type of organization they are.
Great, thank you. Next line item, fifty-three-five-oh-two, technology. Mr. Taylor, description, network vulnerability assessment. It's a recommendation from the annual fiscal audit. This will allow us to properly assess vulnerabilities and mitigate them in a cost-effective manner using new or existing mitigation systems and strategies. This is budgeted for five thousand dollars, based on our earlier conversation about the project that you currently have going on, as well as some other initiatives going on within your department that have been funded. I just think it wouldn't be wise for us to budget five thousand dollars at this time based on a recommendation. So I'm going to make the motion that we cut this line item. The line item is fifty-three-five-oh-two, network vulnerability. I totally get it. I think it's a good initiative, find some cost savings, figure out how we can operate better. But again, we're searching here for nickels and dimes.
Yep, I would just, just to add a little bit of color to that, that's a requirement now for cyber insurance is a penetration test, and that's exactly what that line is, and that's why it lives in the other services line and not in like a hardware or software line.
So it's not a recommendation, it's a requirement?
Correct, yes. When we went... I mean, it's a recommendation in that we don't need to do it, but then it would impact our cyber insurance.
So there's a ramification?
Correct, yes. Yeah, it's... I mean, they call it a recommendation because we could still say no, but it wouldn't be wise for us to say no.
Understood. Mr. Chair, I'm going to withdraw my motion based on the fact that there could be an impact, an adverse impact to another component of our school district.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Fifty-three-five-oh-two, other technical services, technology, CNET, door camera and badge swipe hardware and software repairs. The justification is CNET is one of two companies who service our existing system. This budget's approximately one service call per school in the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four school year. Budgeted amount is thirty thousand dollars. Before I make my motion on a cut here, how many service calls do we have per year?
So that varies. Some years, we have multiple per school. This just tries to budget about a fifteen hundred dollar service call per school. It could be, giving you a perfect example, you know, Tollgate High School had damage done to their intercom system and their buzzer system, so that's a three thousand dollar call versus a five hundred dollar call that something isn't connected right. So that's just an average to give each school one bite at the apple to fix something. That may break. We, a couple years ago, probably about two years ago, we installed new security cameras, new access control. The hardware's covered, ten years, but these would be the service calls to get somebody out to fix it.
And what is the rate for a service call per hour?
I don't know if I can get that information to you, but it just ranges on, you know, project, which is billed down to the hour, obviously, but that's a good question. But that's why that's a justification.
Would you say in the prior year, we've had greater than twenty-one service calls?
I would say, to date this fiscal year, we've probably had ten, I would say, so far. Like I said, some range more and some range less, but on average, ten calls. Some as low as five hundred, some as... The Tollgate example would be three thousand.
Okay. I put in here that we cut twenty thousand dollars... Ten thousand dollars, excuse me, ten thousand dollars from this line item, so we'd be budgeting twenty thousand dollars. And the reason why I did that is you brought it up. If you take twenty-one sites throughout the school district and you divide that thirty thousand, it comes out to roughly fourteen-twenty-eight-fifty-seven. So my rationale behind that is one site per school, fourteen-twenty-eight, ten service calls, you know what I mean? If we paid per hour, they could come in less. So rather than just cut it in half to fifteen thousand, put it at twenty thousand with a little contingency there, and have a savings of ten thousand dollars on that line item...
And I think that's fair. I think that's a good, good move.
So your motion is ten thousand dollars, right?
Ten thousand dollar reduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just have a quick question. This is for Ms... That was fifty-three-five-oh-two, right? For Mr. McGrath, you're tracking all this, right?
Yes, I am.
I'm trying to track it, too, but you're the expert, not me. Okay, all right. Any other discussion? I'll call a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone else? Aye. Okay. Opposed? Motion carries.
Fifty-four-four-oh-seven, internet connectivity. Ocean annual internet bandwidth fees, all buildings E-rate possible. Why this one stood out to me? This is the internet into the buildings. This should be E-rate reimbursed up to sixty percent.
It is, but it's up to fifty percent. That, at the time of this budget, we were still hoping that our free reduced lunch numbers would give us a sixty percent reimbursement because of the decline in the need for free reduced lunch, or the decline in the number of forms filled out for free reduced lunch. We're going to get reimbursed at fifty percent. So those numbers that you see there, and so the funny thing about E-rate is that we need to budget in our budget as per the federal government's requirement for E-rate, the full amount. So you'll see seventeen and fifty, sixty-seven. Our cost is half of that.
Okay.
So there's built-in savings there that end up helping places in the future, you know, through transfer, like you said.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, Dr. Taylor, are you saying that the federal government requires us to book the full amount?
Correct.
Okay, even though net, we're going to be paying half that, right?
Correct.
But we have to book... Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And just as another example of that, you'll notice up above in that line that we were talking about, the signet service calls, you'll notice that the Wally, you know, managed services, a hundred plus forty, we only pay half of that. So that's another example.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You're all set.
Thank you.
All right. Line item fifty-five-one-eleven, transportation contractors. Pull up your email real quick, Carla.
Good to go.
All right, great. I appreciate your information that you provided onto me. My first question would be, you're showing a nine hundred thousand dollar decrease in this line item. You've answered that question, but for the public, can you also explain why there was a nine hundred thousand dollar decrease on this line item from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four?
With the UCOA codes, I pay RIDE through a PO, and they have all different UCOA codes. And one of the UCOA codes in RIDE is regular ed transportation. So even though it's out of... It's out of district, it's still regular ed. So that was the line that was cut. And so it wasn't to do with our busing, it was to do with kids that go to other schools.
Yeah, hold on one second. I think you're answering a different question. Am I right?
I believe she's talking about the decrease in the budget, but I want to explain it a little bit further.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not talking about two different things. I don't know if...
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the total line item for transportation as a decrease, but...
Sure, I'll explain it a little bit further. Carla alluded to the fact of statewide transportation, which is the transportation... Carla alluded to the fact of statewide transportation, which is the transportation arm of the Rhode Island Department of Education. In looking at their forecast for next year, we had some concerns on what they're projecting for transportation. I believe I communicated with everyone last evening, a follow-up this morning with a meeting with statewide, myself, Tim McGrath, Carla McGovern, and we realized that we, we should see some efficiencies if we pull some levers. Mr. McGrath wants to explain some of the levers that we intend to look at this next year, so we can achieve the same level of service at the price that has been requested within the budget documents.
Before we go on, I just, I don't want to interrupt, but I'm not sure, Mr. Galligan, your question was from the presentation last week, or early this week?
Yeah, well, last, last Wednesday.
Right, the transportation slide was, was, here's, here's the number, and it reflects a decrease from last, from last year. But that's what this is? I, I thought that was with the, the rate you, you pay based on how many buses you run.
Yeah, so, to, to merge it all together, so.
Okay.
The five-five-one-one-one, that is the transportation piece. So, when you compare last year to this year, we are adjusting this year to what we're actually seeing for first student. So, we were budgeting for fifty-seven buses, and I believe thirty-six, and that, that is what the budgeted amount is compared to twenty-three, which used a different rate, and now we're just adjusting it to what we're actually seeing, and what the, the vendor can provide. To Mr. McCaffrey's point, to the RIDE piece, so, and Carla, the, in that piece is the statewide piece. When we received the projections from RIDE of an increase of a million dollars, it was prudent for us to run that down and figure out why a program servicing approximately two hundred kids was costing the same as, you know, the fifty-seven large buses. So that was what the conversation is today, and we're able to pull some of that back in-house and look at some different options, because statewide, at their own admission, is the most expensive option. So it's very prudent for us to look at this aspect of this four million dollars projected, and try to pull some of these back, and other districts are looking at the same thing. So, that overall, is what kind of contributes to that change, you know, we're looking at the Department of Education's piece, and winning that, pulling that number down, along with adjusting the twenty-four budget to be what, you know, the fifty-seven buses and the thirty-six that Carla has projected. So I, hopefully I answered your question, Mr. Galligan.
And, and by pulling it back in-house, do we anticipate, or pulling some components of it back in-house?
Yeah.
Do we anticipate any interruption to existing service?
No, we would be looking at, um, so we're starting the process, we'd be looking at availability of the current fleet, if there's tiers that they could additionally run, you know, maximizing what we already have, and then, um, looking in these line items, and instead of contracting statewide, we could go out and get vans, or a couple, you know, there's a lot of different opportunities in this, you know, this large amount of money that we can then try to pull those and shift in different places. So no, it would not, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not the transportation director, but it would not affect the current, current status.
And when would these cost, let's assume we can't pull any of this off, what is the cost, and when would these costs begin?
Uh, it would be over the full year, um, so if, if we were subjected to, and this is just their projection based on their current enrollment, if that enrollment shifts around, it's as good as, you know, it's just their projection. Because they're seeing a twenty-four percent increase in their labor costs, which is being passed on to the consumer, passed on to consumers, the statewide group. So yeah, there would, there would be a cost, but, you know, the one, for example, the CTC, it would probably only require us to use one bus at approximately, you know, that's a half a million dollars that they were charging us, that we'd probably just be able to pull from one, have one tier run that we already pay for, so.
Yeah, no, my question is, what, what, with the increased cost, what is the projected total over the, the upcoming fiscal year?
Uh, for, well, I just have the statewide piece from them, it's a four million dollar total piece from them.
Yes, and, and that is an increase from FY twenty-three of?
Approximately nine hundred thousand dollars, if I'm looking at this right, yeah.
The, how comfortable are we with these costs not budgeted, and us having strategies here to kind of not have this nine hundred thousand dollar increase for out-of-district transportation? How confident are we that these are strategies that can be implemented by September?
Yeah, for, for example, the CTE savings would be three hundred thousand dollars alone, and that would be mixed with the other items in that line item, so as far as I'm concerned, I'm confident, I can.
Yeah, we could do it.
And, and when does the administration, does the administration feel, they'll be able to have all of this stuff in place before we come back before you in June to, you know, ratify our contract after the city council goes through it? Just because, and, and I'll, I'll give you a little bit of why I'm asking these questions. And I'm glad you guys caught that this week, and that you're figuring it out, and you're working through it. If we don't have this budgeted, obviously, and there's costs that start to amount, we'd have to go back and hit our budget elsewhere, right, in the general fund, or, you know, making cuts to other services to our school district. So, that's why I'm asking this question, and I just, you know, I probably, after I'm done speaking, defer to the chair, or to provide additional assurances on to my colleagues and I, that we probably shouldn't consider adding more in at this time, but first, I'll, I'll let you give us some confidence, and then defer.
Sure, as an example, we're not gonna reinvent the wheel with the CTE component, we're gonna model like Coventry has done, keeping the existing depot stops that are presently established by statewide, and running off their, their depot stops, so we would have exact same service providing to the, to the students, it wouldn't change at all, and we would see a savings of at least three hundred thousand dollars, just on that one lever. There are other levers i- in the, in the different aspects of statewide that we could also see some efficiencies.
Mr. Chair, before I continue on you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Galligan, and I, I would like to weigh in on, on statewide. I, I would expect you guys and your attorney to have a meeting with statewide, because the very notion to take thirty kids from the Annan Hope Depot stop to Ponte Gansett at twelve thousand dollars a student is abhorrent to me. That we take a hundred and sixty special ed students, sending them out of district at thirty-one thousand dollars per bus, is abhorrent to me. We're not talking necessarily handicapped children, you're talking just a regular special ed, but thirty-one thousand dollars per bus. And, and that's, and that's the state, I'm thirty-one, I'm sorry, thirty-one thousand dollars per person. We could buy them a used car, we could buy their families a used car. We could give families a voucher for five thousand dollars and say, please transport your student back. It, it is absolutely insane. So I would hope, you know, we're a fairly sizable district, so if we can lead the way, and I, I know you had a conversation with them, and again, I think we should all go with our attorney, and then sit across from them, and, and just tell them, we're not gonna take this. So, you guys have expressed to me, because we talked at length about this last night and yesterday, that you are very, very confident that you can, you can cover this with, with the plans you have. So, I have no reason to think you can't. And I would hope that everybody else in there, hope we get there first, and then everyone else and their cousin try to figure out how they do this, because I believe when you had the conversation, you said that the very first line out of their mouth was, we know that we're the most expensive transportation option in the state. Oh, it's nice.
Correct, yeah, there's no secret that, uh, that they know that it's becoming expensive and only more expensive, so.
Yeah, and, and, and there's a lot of ways you can be flexible with this too, I think, so, it, it's, again, to, to Mr. Galligan's point, you take what, when you first learn is, is a potential disaster, and, and I think you kind of dive into it, and I don't think anyone has dived into this, but dove, dived into this before, because it was essentially, okay, statewide is statewide. So, okay, it goes up, it goes up, but, you know, to, to hit you on a, on a Friday afternoon at five o'clock with an email to say, by the way, here are your new projections, not even a warning, that by the, you should look at these as significant increases, because everyone would have gotten hit with the same thing. So it, it, no, you put, that's RIDE, so, okay, but I'm confident, and I, no reason not to trust you. So, if you guys tell us, tell me, that you can take care of this within the existing budget, I don't have a reason to not believe that. So, thank you, Mr. Galligan.
Keeping it on this UCOA code, but switching from out-of-district to in-district, it's no secret, I've been pretty vocal that we need to adjust transportation, you certainly inherited a lot of, a lot of issues that you're trying to work through, and I am very respectful of, of that situation. I did a little bit of research on this, I wanted to make sure that I was doing exactly what I promised people from day one, and that's, you know, being aware of what I'm voting on, as well as doing my due diligence in areas where I think we need to do a little bit better. On this particular one here, I did speak with the transportation vendor, and it, it's of my opinion that we need seven additional buses for this school district, that we need to go from fifty-seven to sixty-four. A conservative figure for this would be six hundred thousand dollars. I asked, you know, I know that we've been told that there is a driver shortage, right? I said, well, if there's a driver shortage, how can you get these buses to us? How can you get us sixty-four, if you're saying the magic? And they said, with advance notice, if we were to let them know, they would be able to pull them together. I know. But, just like we, we have to give them the benefit of the doubt, right? And, uh, this is a, this has been a lingering issue for the school district this year, and I, I think that even if, if we go to sixty-four, and you get a driver or two, or five that call out, you know, I think with some of the other strategies that you're using right now, maybe we could still maintain the level of service that we need. But right now, with the delays on a, on a daily basis, both in the morning and the afternoon, I just think that we need to try something different here, and, yeah, please.
Okay, so I budgeted originally for sixty-three last year, and then I was asked to cut to fifty-seven. Um, it wasn't last year, it was the year before, and I, I wrote for sixty-three.
Yes, ma'am.
First two weeks of school.
That's the issue. I'm giving you more money, Mr. Taylor, he was giving, shoot me, angry eyes. I'm, I'm giving you more money. Let's try it, who knows if it's even gonna be able to stick after this goes through the city council, but let's, you know, it's entertaining, right? What do you think?
I think it's great.
Great. With that said, Mr. Chair, I make a motion on this line item, that we go six hundred thousand dollars in addition to the budget of three million, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to, how much, you want to just add six hundred thousand dollars to five-five-one-one-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's a motion. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. I, I, I get the sentiment, I truly do. I don't believe for a student, for a minute, that they're gonna be able to provide us with sixty-four buses. And I think, I think the extra six hundred thousand, again, as I said Monday night, I think we have to be very conscious of what we go to the city with, regardless of the intention. I don't think they can provide it, and I don't think, if, if you can, you can, Carla can start to build routes based on sixty-four, but if all of, that phone call comes and said, you're getting fifty-seven, now that's a scramble and a half, right? That's worse than the problem that we currently have. So, I mean, I, I would love to have sixty, sixty-four, sixty-three, whatever it was. I mean, we'll vote for this, and we'll, we'll vote this up or down. I, I don't, I get, I get your intention, I, I really do, I just, I just don't see it as realistic, and I'm not, you know, I think we'll be back here in June saying, no, this, this isn't doable, but, okay, so there's the motion, it's, any more, any further discussion? If not, a call of vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, I just have a comment.
No, please.
Um, I understand that we're probably gonna be back in June, but, I mean, I personally would like to put it on the table anyways, because we're also dealing with the depot that I don't think should exist, because we already have a child that got hurt, hit by a car, which is also like, which we're told by the school department, that is not responsibility, it's the city's, right? And they haven't, there's been, there hasn't, this, the mother is still looking for answers. So at least we're putting it something out there, being like, we're doing our due, the school is doing our due diligence to do what we can, correct? And if we get denied, I like to put it out there, say like, we owe somebody something, to try and make this right.
Okay. Any other comment? Nothing, uh, we didn't vote yet, right? No one voted?
No, sir.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion carries.
Next one is fifty-seven, three-oh-five, equipment, pilgrim, EMT, emergency care person who brings the textbooks. It's also listed, the NREMT exam. The exams will be a recurring expense, it's a one-time purchase for the textbooks, needed for the lifesaver CTE. We budgeted twenty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty. It's my understanding that this is, um, this is for twenty students. The NREMT exam is roughly a hundred and twenty dollars, and we are short three thousand dollars for this expenditure, given the application that was sent to RIDE. We had indicated that we would pay for the students to take the NREMT, so.
What we have here is funding for the program from general funds, there's also the Perkins grant, where funding will, will pick up the difference to support the program on, on those costs, the, the missing three thousand dollars that you, you don't see in the general fund budget, it's a federal grant.
Are we, are we able to use Perkins grants on first-year?
We're able to use Perkins funding on it, we're not able to use the categorical money. Categorical money will, will actually, they'll calculate it at the state level next year, and it'll actually have a line item specifically for that program. But because the new program approved this year, during the year, they didn't, they won't receive any categorical funds, but we'll make sure that they do receive some Perkins funding to offset the remaining dollars they need. I believe Mr. Kane may have had, had a discussion with the program instructor on that as well, early, early, earlier in the spring.
So the, in the twenty-three to twenty-four school year, the twenty students that take the EMTB course with, through our career and technical education program, will be able to sit for the NREMT at?
Yes, yes, part of the approval process, we said we were gonna do certain things, that's one of the items that we said we would do as a district, and we'll fund that through Perkins, the, the additional three thousand dollars.
Great. Look at that, I didn't have to spend any more money. Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. I, I was having a difficult time finding this within the budget, so I just made up my own rules, and fifty-seven, three-oh-five, equipment, athletics, was the SAN Pro in that line item budget? My eyes were starting to water as I was going through it. So, before I make my motion here, I'm just gonna say, Mr. Oliver does a heck of a job in sourcing this school district some really high-end infield mix for our fields. It's, he and I, we were talking about the infield mix, and the cost he pays, and where he sources it from, and I'm on the board down at the Wark North Little League, and I thought we were getting a good deal, and that we had top-tier stuff, and then I found out what our school district was getting, and, and the price we were paying, and where it was coming from. So, the issue with that clay is, if you don't care for it the right way, it's, it starts to clump up, and a really nice playing surface starts to go away immediately after being put down. Furthermore, it presents safety issues as well. So if we look at it from a, a playing surface perspective, and then a safety perspective, these two things kind of go away if it's not properly cared for. I do remember the presentation from last Wednesday, where it was requested a SAN Pro, with my involvement down at Wark North Little League, we ended up buying a lightly-used SAN Pro, and I think that we could probably, instead of getting one SAN Pro and taxing Mr. Oliver's team, and having them transported between the schools, for that requested amount of thirty thousand dollars, we can get two lightly-used SAN Pros. The vendor is out of New Jersey, so the only issue we would have thereafter is the logistics of getting them up here, but I believe that. But I believe that we could get these two San Pros. I, I just want to talk about how, and I've already called them, and they've got some new inventory coming in of used models. I just want to talk about how we have some really unbelievable sports teams that we should be proud about here in the city, and having these really good sports teams brings in District One parents, right, or Division One parents, coming to play Our Lady Patriots in the back at Pilgrim High School on that field that you guys are investing in, that the city's investing in, LaSalle, right, South Kings, North Kings, and they're coming there. And then we have this field that has some nice playing surface put on it, but then after a couple of weeks, it's torn apart, right, Mr. Oliver? Would you agree or disagree on that? That it's, you know, you can only screen it so many times and nail drag it, but if you have the right equipment...
That's correct. We do our very best with what we have, and we try to make it as, as such a good playing surface as we can.
So I, I'm going to make the motion here that, that we fund this nice-to-have item because, again, if we're going to have an athletics program, we should have the equipment that not only provides our children with a safe playing surface and a, an appropriate playing surfaces, but also takes a little bit of burden off of Mr. Oliver's team and gives him the appropriate equipment for them to do the job, instead of saying, "Here's a push lawnmower, there's five acres, go cut the grass." So with that, I'm going to make a motion. I'm hoping this is the correct line item, Alcoa code here, Mr. Chair. 57305 Equipment Athletics, how'd I do?
Is, is that where it lives? It lives there? Okay. So you're looking to add how much to that line item?
Uh, $30,000. That would be for two used San Pros and then cocoa mats.
Well, you, you can only add the $30,000.
Yeah, whatever they want to do with the money.
Can't tell them what to do.
There we go.
Okay, uh, there's a motion to add $30,000 to 57305. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries, 3-1.
All right, the next one was offered up to us by our superintendent and crew. 57306 Furniture and Fixtures. Recommended cut. I make a motion to cut $10,000 based on the information offered to us by the administration.
Yes. Okay, motion to reduce 57306 by $10,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next line item, 56215 Electricity. But before I say anything else, I, I just, I just want to say to our dime a dozen, Mr. McGrath, this line item, the superintendent and the team started working on this, and Mr. McGrath, just by working a little magic on a $1.3 million budget for electricity, was able to go and grab us $100,000 in savings. So from the time the budget was proposed to now, I'm making the motion to modify this line item by cutting it by $100,000, thanks to Mr. McGrath.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next line item, 53303 Conferences and Workshops presented by the superintendent. Budgeted amount $15,000. Not completely reducing conferences and workshops, but making a motion to reduce this line item by $5,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just want to ask them, the superintendent said that that was okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to verify.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next line item, 56406 Textbooks Non-Public. This is another recommendation from the administration. Budgeted amount $40,000. Based on the analysis performed by the administration, they've noticed that this line item typically goes, typically does not spend its entire money, and they can transfer out throughout the year. So not completely withdrawing at all, so there's no impact to education, but reducing it to a more appropriate amount. I make the motion, based on the recommendation, that we reduce this line item to $20,000.
Second.
One second. Do, do you want to, you want to reduce the line item by $20,000?
Yeah.
Not, okay, you said reduce...
From $40,000 to $20,000.
Wait a minute, this is textbooks non-public. 56406? Yeah, 56406. So you want to take it from $43,100 to $20,000, or are we just taking $20,000 off so the line item would be $23,100? Because the administration... Yeah, they, they call for a $20,000 reduction.
I have, okay. What was the initial starting number there?
$43,100. And then they had a, they feel they can reduce that by $20,000, so the...
Yeah, so the motion is to reduce...
To reduce line...
From $43,100 down $20,000.
Right, so reduce the line item by $20,000.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next one, I just need a point of clarification on this. 56101, hoping this is the right area, and I'm hoping Mr. McCaffrey can help me out. General supplies, but curriculum listed. Certifications for the lifesaver program. The $1,000 in certifications for lifesaver I students and $2.1,000 for lifesaver II students. Mr. McCaffrey, are we going to be able to cover 3.1,000 with Perkins grants? Or is that something that we need to get into the budget this evening?
We should be able to cover it. Mr. Kane will sit down with the lifesaver program again tomorrow. He'll be able to incorporate it into the Perkins budget and go from there, or within the week. He'll be able to incorporate it in there.
Thank you very much. And at some point, if you could follow up next, next week after we get through the regular school committee meeting and stuff?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
No necessary modification needed there. Next line item, 54601 Renting Land and Buildings. In, in speaking with some people over at Pilgrim, it's my understanding that the rare gymnasium is not able to be used for physical education because it's at this time being used for storage. For those unfamiliar, the backspace at Pilgrim that used to be used for storage, the school administration did a great job with it and turned it into a, kind of a, a training room for before and after games. So they're not able to use that back gymnasium. They've talked about wanting to incorporate pickleball and other activities in physical education. And so I used a quotation provided by the school administration for renting a storage container, which was $6,475. And so I'm making a motion to add that into the budget for storage of sports equipment to free up the rare gymnasium for physical education.
Is that, that's the correct line item that that would land in, if, if that's what Mr. Gallin wants to do?
It would depend on what type of storage. Are you like a storage container? Because then it would fall on that line, yeah.
It would or would not?
Would, yep. If it's like a...
Yes, yep.
And what was the amount? Six, that, what was it?
The numbers given by the admin for others is $6,475.
Okay, so, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Where, where did the estimate come from? Is that something you requested or did, was that something we had already had?
Uh, I use the figures in this current budget for all their rented storage containers. Now, putting it in there tonight, I, I could see your apprehension if we don't have a firm figure. However, if we get it into there, and then the administration can go and get a more firm figure, if it's less or more, then we'd have to...
No, I, I, it's not about the, the $6,000. I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, what, again, I mean, you're... We're, we're telling Mr. Ricks, "Okay, you get extra space, go do something with it" when he may not be able to do something with it. My only concern is, you know, I, I get, you move it out of a, a storage place, you put in a storage container. Okay, so now we have free space, but it, it's, I think it's a bit of a cart before the horse. If it's a $6,000 item, if this is something we wanted to propose in the course of the year of, of the budget, if this is something that Mr. Ricks wants to develop, we could develop it. I don't think we'd have a problem finding $6,000. I'm just, you know...
No, this isn't, uh, non, non-athletic related, physical education.
Okay, but my points, my point still stands. I just, I just not quite sure. I know what the intention is. I'm not sure what the result's going to be, except we have a storage container full of stuff. So I think if there's a proposed use for the space, it should have come up to us to say, "Here's how we can use this space, and this is what we need, what we would need to do to make that happen." But we're kind of doing it the other way around, and I just, you know, I just not quite sure that from a budgetary perspective, the message that sends. I mean, this is, it's up to administration. It's up to, if Mr. Ricks sees a value there, that's fine. We may see a value, they may not see it, but they're the professional educators, we're not. So that, that's my, that's my only concern. But there is a motion, and it's been seconded, right? Did you second it? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Further discussion, I should say.
Yeah, I, I guess if you have a concern on, on the procedural aspect of this, is that your concern, the procedural aspect?
Yeah, I, I think this is, you know, at a hundred thousand foot level, this is the school committee saying, "Here's, here's some money, here, go do something with it." When typically it works the other way around. It's, it's the administration comes up to us and say, "Here's what we need to, to do this." So...
So big, on that, on that notion, I, I withdraw my motion on that, and, and hopefully we can have someone reach out over there to the PhysEd Department and, and then follow the proper course of action, so that way we can free up that back gymnasium for...
Yeah, I, I think, you know, if they came before us with a, with a plan, is this what we can do with the space, and that, then your costs justify, you know, again, it's $6,000, and you can easily argue it's only $6,000, but I would say, let's, let's have it developed for us, to us, by administration, so...
Okay.
Okay?
So I, I withdraw the motion.
Okay, very good.
And my last one goes back to Ms. McGovern from the email you provided to me on Traversa. You had indicated that Traversa is $75.28 and that the Ride 360 is $6,603.56.
Correct.
Transportation. So that would be... So is it, is it on the transportation line? 51? No, it's a... What number? Yeah, it's a software.
So, Mr. McGrath, the question is, where does Traversa live, right? In the, in the UCOA line?
Should be 57311. Yep, there it is. Yeah, 57311.
So you, you've indicated via email that it was $7,528 for Traversa and $6,603.56 for Ride 360. In the budget I'm seeing for that line item, $19,445?
Correct.
Could, could you tell me what makes up the difference? Because when I'm, when I'm adding those two together?
No, it, it, it doesn't add up to that. It was a budgeted amount, because it does go up every year. Feel free to cut.
Okay. With Carlos' approval, I make the motion to cut $5,314 from this line item.
That's 57311, and, no, yes, 57311. What was the amount again, Scallion?
We'll just give it a flat number, $5,300.
All right, so it's... Okay, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That I yield.
Any other members have any other proposals or suggestions or line item adjustments? Yeah, go ahead, ask questions.
I only have questions. Sorry. My questions, I guess, for later. I don't know who this goes to. So in the overall numbers, it was the AM PM supervision. It went up 4,329%. It went, I guess, we used 70,022, so we're asking for the same. What is the AM PM supervision? What does that fall under? Sorry, I don't have codes. I'm just going by the budget, what the superintendent gave.
Sure. Good evening. AM PM supervision at the elementary level is when the buses and the students arrive that we pay a teacher or a staff member, or even a lunch lady could step up, but we do pay someone to supervise the children when they arrive before the school day has begun.
So last year, so, so up to date, we've only paid $808, but we're asking for another $70,000?
If I may step in. Um, it's a contractual, contractual stipend in the teacher's contract.
Okay.
It's an Appendix B position, it's called, and they're typically paid out at the end of the year. So that won't come out until May or June.
Um, so we, we paid $70,022? But then, so then we have, so we budgeted $35,000 last year? Is that what it is?
So during COVID too, things changed, so it's hard to look back at a three-month comparison. Because when we were hybrid and we were in pods, things were very different. We would have to look back pre-COVID to see what those expenses are. And then in some of our larger schools where we have, you know, higher student enrollment, sometimes we do pay two teachers for that because they might be needed in two separate areas. So that, it does fluctuate per year with that as well.
And then right under that, that is the AM PM supervision classified? We're asked, we budgeted for $60,000?
So that is for teaching assistants who are hourly. So if they're asked to either ride a bus with a student or be with students prior to their contractual hours, or required to stay after their contractual hours, they're paid overtime.
So why do we budget $60,000 when the most we've ever paid is $7,861?
That I can't answer.
Who owns, who owns that?
Because that went up 510%.
It was probably based off an estimate that came from payroll reviewing the records that hit that line.
Uh, Mr. McGrath, are those paid out with regularity, or, or does that, I don't know how that works.
Okay, sorry. I do believe that it did increase because with the COVID restrictions and we had to separate kids a little bit more, especially as former principal of Workneck, I know that we always had like two zones, and once COVID came, and now, now that we used certain exits and kids had to be farther, we needed more supervision, and now it's just really become a, a really great work in progress. So I think that that also might be a reason why it went up as well.
But no, during COVID, it was down 2,000, and then in '22, we paid $7,800. But then, um, now we're asking for $60,000 for the classified.
What line item is that?
Um, this, I'm just...
51327.
327.
Thank you.
Yeah, the historicals are all very low.
So it seems like there's an extra $50,000?
It could be a typo, right?
It could be the same, because the, the line below had the same issue, Mr. Test of the 80, the 90.
Right. Right, so that could, that could be a very similar.
So yeah, you can probably pull.
So we're gonna look, okay, so, Michelle, do you want to make a motion to reduce 51327? We look at the historicals, 9, $10,000, so you want to reduce, I'm sorry, 7, 7,800 was the high?
Was the high.
So.
No, no, I'm sorry, it's a year to date, it says 10,589. Year to date.
Um, yeah, okay, year to date, so, do you want to take?
We're looking at at least 40,000.
$40,000 out of that?
Yeah, I guess so.
We'll reduce that to, to a 20, okay. So your motion is to reduce line item 51327 by $40,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Yeah, reduce, reduction of 40. Okay, and then, Ms. Kirby-Chapin, did you want to, the AMPM supervision, the, it's budgeted for 70?
Well, we have used 70 in the past, so I guess it makes more sense.
Yeah, because I look at this, it, it doesn't look bad, I just don't know where, why this, this year's actuals look funky.
Again, I was just looking at the 808, so I was like, whoa, where'd that number come from?
Yeah, because '22, '21, it was 52896, that was a COVID year, '22 was 69,000. This year, we budgeted 35. Ms. Kuzma, was that what you were talking about, how we would separate the kids out? And is that's the, no, AMPM supervision, is that different?
No, that's, that includes AMPM supervision.
Because we're looking, if you look at it from a, a charting perspective, it's, it's high, then it drops, drops further, and then we're budgeting, we're budgeting more than we had before, so I don't, I don't know if that was a typo as well.
No, the, because since the, since we pay annually, we haven't realized that expense yet.
Okay, so that's why it's showing 800?
Eight hundred dollars.
So that's, that's why, that's asking if it was paid with regularity.
In June, you'll see that number jump to where its actual should be. And that's one, another one of those numbers that's hard to predict.
Gotcha, okay. So, based on, on those historicals, 70 probably isn't unrealistic, right? Because whoever's getting paid for that, is that a stipend thing, is that contractual? So that amount's the same, hasn't changed? So the question is, maybe we have more people doing it for, I'm comfortable with that at 70, especially if it gets paid at the end of the year, right?
So that's the first line, but the second line we dropped, right? We're talking about the difference in?
Right, the, the, AMPM supervision classified, we, we reduced that dramatically, but AMPM 51324.
But again, '22, we're still in COVID, right? Just put that out there, right? That was because we had more people on the ground?
Yeah, so in '22.
So that was our high?
Yeah, okay.
But realistically, it might be more like 50, right?
Well, it'll be interesting to see what happens this year, right? We'll know in June what happens. Ms. McGrath, well, we know that's the end of, maybe it's, Ms. Jerry, is it the end of the year we'll know this, or would you know it in mid-June? Yeah, so when, when we come back, we're gonna have to come back to do something, so we may have a much better idea on what that is. And if we have to make another cut, we can cut, we can reallocate from that. So my suggestion would be to keep it at the 70, and then if we come back in June, and you know what, it's trending to be 55, then we can move that 15 somewhere else.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, going back to same thing, we have a subtotal 57,000, whatever subtotal capital equipment and property, that went up 130%. We've topped, so we've gone from 1,500, and now we're budgeting for 3,228?
You said it was capital equipment?
Subtotal capital equipment and property.
Oh, but that's, that's a subtotal, right?
Right. I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, all right, so that's 57,000, subtotal, so it went from?
Because I'm just noticing the trend, that it's like, whoa, that doubled.
Yeah, is that 50?
Should that double?
Ms. McGrath, I think that's 57,000.
I'm sorry, is that 3 million?
That's 3 million. That's 3 million.
Yeah, it's 3 million, not 100.
What's wrapped up in all that? That's a, that's a total of other?
Yep, so that's all your 57s, so you're, you're building improvements, your vehicles. The main piece of that is your technology software, which this year is the 1.961, which all the details in the books, so a lot of that was ESR funded in previous years, and we're also trying to return some of the equipment and other items that we've deferred in previous years back to the budget, so.
Right, so, so that's, some of that's an ESR funding issue.
But we're looking at, we're doubling, and that's?
Well, yeah, but, but the thing is, that's not a single line item, so that's, that's a total of a bunch of, of the whole 57 series in the UCOA, so as Mr. McGrath said, there's a bunch of different things in there, right? So the technology, and there was a big spike this year in the technology, because last year it was ESR funded, this year it's not, so we're gonna pay for it out of our operating budget. So that's why you're seeing, we'd be seeing that, and some of those are expenditures, I could be wrong, but in the 57,000 line item, either Dr. Taylor or Ms. McGrath, sometimes there's not a lot of consistency, because it all depends on what you have to buy, right? It depends on what you have to replace, right? So if it's not necessarily a Chromebook, where every year you're, you're buying, you spend on it 600,000 on Chromebooks, there could be other instances. Would any of this be curriculum-related in the technology piece?
I believe there's, yeah, I believe the large amount of the technology software is related to curriculum.
Yeah, I thought there was one line item, and I don't have it here. But as, as we make other cuts in the, in the 57 line item, that's going to impact that total, so I'm just, I'm gonna go quickly to see what I had in the 57s. Yeah, I still have some stuff to do in there.
I might have more questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, same thing with, so tutoring services, the past, we haven't had any, or we used 16,758, and this year we're looking for 60,000 for tutoring services, 53216? I'm just looking at my budget.
53216, yep. All right, so who owns the tutoring services line? Tim, you have the detail, right? Sorry, Ms. McGrath, you have the detail.
Looks like special services, yeah, you guys have 60,000 in that line.
Need another microphone over there.
So those are tutoring services through a company called LearnWell, for all students who are hospitalized at Bradley Hospital.
Do we have an increase in, in that population? And I think, Ms. Kirby-Chapin, I won't speak for you, but I think what you're, you're asking is, you know, historically, well, this line item has only been FY '22, it was 16,7, and there was nothing, so did it live somewhere else?
I don't think that it was required, I think through COVID, that some changes came about where we needed to provide students with tutoring who were hospitalized.
All right, attorney Andy is just saying, don't touch that, because that's, so there's some legal aspects to that, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the next thing is, question, so we are paying? I can't see the exact number right in front of me, so right now, as far as we're paying teachers' contracts, the certain amounts, we're paying the teachers, we're, we're paying personal, the development, which is up 628% for the teachers, their education, and books, total, we're paying about almost 125,000. Aspen, we're paying 129, I'm sorry, 133,000, and then we're paying 2 million, almost 2 million dollars on software for curriculum.
Would you happen to know what, what those UCOA codes are? Because I don't know if a bunch of it's wrapped in, you have a lot of things there?
Yeah.
And I'm just not, I'm just looking for the UCOA line, so, so they can tell you what's behind it.
Well, I just, I thought it'd be easier just to put it together, because I was just, because overall, we're paying 2 million dollars in software.
Right, but, but software is a broad term, right? So software.
But that's what I was kind of wondering, if we're still, if we're still paying for books, how, like, so of the software programs, are we, are we using these in all the schools? So we have the Wilson Training, the I Ready, the Great Minds, the Literacy, Wit and Wisdom, the Gizmo Online, the Delta, the MindWise, the Choices, the Brain Camp, the Cami, the Seesaw, the Nuzia, and the Pebble.
Yes, that's all me.
Yeah.
So that's a really good question. What we do is, we've been able to decrease the amount spent on actual physical textbooks, because a lot of what we're doing now is online. Not that that's a great thing, right? Everybody agrees, but it's just the way that the world is right now, everything is online, so if we can have the students engage in platforms that challenge them, that's not a textbook that actually moves and works with them at their level, I think that that's very valuable. And so a lot of these do that, and instead of buying new textbooks for science at the middle school level, and at the high school level, every year, what we do is, we pay for things like, you said Gizmos, that's an online lab, where the students actually can make things happen, like they can show what forces do, or gravity, or, you know, I'm not the expert on this, but it's, it's a pretty cool app, and they use it constantly, just to show how things work with physics, and in other areas. And then we have Nuzella, some people call it NewsElla, but it's used broadly in all of the English courses, and in social studies at the middle and high school level. StemScopes is used grade 6 to 12, that's our online science platform. Gizmos is online science. EdPuzzle is something where teachers can create like quizzes within content that's online, so it helps them to create presentations for their class, they can use things that other teachers have created, it's just very useful. It's also for assessment, they use it constantly. Delta Math, that is for the high school, for our students with special needs. We have, I can keep, I can keep going, they're all vital, let's put it that way, some of these are state mandated, and what we did was, we looked at all of the usage for every single one of these apps, to make sure that it was being used, and I cut two of them, because they weren't being used enough, and I'm gonna continue to do that.
I was just wondering.
Some of these were ads to help during COVID for the students that were at home, because we needed more digital platforms, and so it's really smart that you found that, because that's why there's a lot of them, and so we can start to weed them out if we don't, if we don't have a good usage for them, because if teachers aren't using them, then we don't need to pay the amount, because every single one of them typically comes in at at least $20,000, that's just the base price, it seems to be.
Right, but we definitely are using them all.
All of these, yep.
Yep, I can, I can say that, in the high school, they use it all, and, and it's very helpful for the kids, it's, they're great tools for them to understand the content.
And it just, it offers better choices than just a stagnant textbook, especially for science and social studies, so.
So is it something that they use afterwards, or the teachers are engaging with them as well?
Teachers are engaging with it, typically on the Promethean boards, and asking the questions, and they're able to show, you know, video clips for current events, for example, instead of just, okay, take out your textbook from, from, you know, eight years ago, that might be totally outdated for social studies, so, you know, it's just very useful, I keep talking, so I'm gonna stop now, if that's all right.
My main thing was, are we still using them? Because it seems like it's a lot.
It is a lot.
Plus all the programming, and plus, not the program, but the teaching lessons, the Aspen, the Panorama, like, it just.
Yep, and those are the big platforms that we, that we have to use Aspen, if we didn't have Aspen, then we wouldn't be able to track anything for our kiddos, that's the whole student information system that we use, so that's, we definitely need one, and they all come in very similarly in price.
I don't have any cuts, I'm just asking questions for later.
Sure.
So same thing, can you explain to me what the difference, because we have the two ROLIs, with the BMIC and the MIS, they're both really expensive, can you explain why we have both?
Absolutely, so both of those have to relate to our managed services, which is our network management. A few years ago, the district made a decision to not have our own network administrator, but to third-party that out. What it gives us is a resource onsite and a whole company behind that person, and that's been really helpful, but it's broken down into two categories. The total, you know, let's say a total salary benefit package would be about 140, this is 140 split up, one is the, the basic maintenance piece, is the break fix stuff that they would do as part of their responsibility, and the other is the, the contract for the resource for the person. Combined, the reason, the other benefit of doing it this way, is as I mentioned earlier, it's E-rate reimbursed, so we only pay half of that, so we save the district about $70,000 by doing it this way, because the federal government reimburses us 70,000.
So with the V OIP, why did we switch over to those? Because they're pretty expensive, too.
Yes, that was done a number of years ago, when the district cut over to the V OIP phone service, our current vendor's Cox, and that back in, you know, a few years ago, won the bid for the district for that. Definitely the way 21st century phone service is going, no longer do you really often see in a lot of places, you know, traditional COAX from the pole, it's all done through the internet.
So that's, be the basic same plan as like a landline, like, there's no difference?
Yes, so that, that's all of our, so that, the Cox bill is all the phones in the entire district, every classroom phone, every office phone, the entirety of the telecommunications is under that. As you see in there, we have to break it up by school because of the UCOA code, but that's, that's broken down there.
So the Chrome-based workstations, so there's workstations at the schools in addition to each teacher gets their own Chromebook?
That's correct, yeah, so what we'll usually see in schools is, the teachers all have their Chromebook, but there's also what we'll call kiosk stations, you'll go into the library, and that might be where students fill out a form for broken Chromebooks, the nurse's office may have a kiosk station as well, and so all the Chrome bases is a little mini computer-looking thing that plugs into a monitor that makes a Chromebook look like a desktop, and so that's just an application where, for whatever the application is, we wouldn't want an 11 or 14-inch screen, we'd want a 24-inch monitor for, for the kiosk station.
And so we need to repair 50 of those?
Yeah, so that's another thing, a lot of what I'll do, and that I've done for the last little over two years, is on a cyclical basis, right? So I think the last time we assessed this with the district, I got about 150 of these, and as they are all approaching end of life, I never want to come before you for all of it, I always want to come before you like every three years for a third of it, and that's this year's third.
So you're just estimating 50?
Yeah, so I take a look at the 150 that are in the district, how many are nearing the end of life, and if we could replace 50, next year 50, we'd be on that cycle, we do the same thing with Chromebooks for the kids and the teachers, and the Promethean boards for the classrooms.
Is that the same thing for the Chromebook repairs parts? 4,600 each, 40, 120,000?
Yeah, so the Chromebook repair parts, that's a separate item, our Chromebooks, breakage, that's all the, the parts, now we've cut that down traditionally, like I mentioned earlier, from 180,000. This year, the actuals are trending even below 100,000, where it will end in a few months, we're not certain, but that's, you know, we've got some scary pictures I could show you of the damage that happens to some of these Chromebooks, be it the screens, the keys, and I think folks behind me have seen those pictures too, so that's to, that's to replace and fix those devices.
And the two different Ciscos, same thing?
The?
The Cisco Duo and the Cisco Umbrella?
Correct, so the?
Two ones with license?
Yep, let me just get to that here. So the Cisco Duo is MFA, the multi-factor authentication, that's another piece that's required by the cybersecurity audit. That's where, if you log into a Windows machine, I'm sure, in a lot of people's works, they have to verify that it's you through sending you a message to the phone, or, or a different token that you might carry, so that's that piece, and the Cisco Umbrella that you'll see is just another layer of network security, that, that monitors any kind of bad actors trying to get into the system as well, so that's just another layer of cybersecurity.
I think most of my other questions got answered through. That's it?
You sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Hazel, do you have anything? Okay, you, um, hold, yeah, hold on one second, would it be okay if we took like a five-minute recess for, okay, so we'll recess for five minutes. Do I get to use this? Yeah, recess for five minutes. Recession for five minutes. Okay, thank you, everyone. I will continue. Ms. Hazel, before I get to you, Mr. Galligan overlooked one of his cuts. We'll just go to him first, is that okay?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Galligan overlooked one more item he wanted to touch. You're good? Okay, all right. Mr. Galligan, I think you had one or two more.
This is another one from the administration. Line item, or a COA 56219. Custodial supplies. The motion would be to remove, motion made to cut $20,000.
So there's a motion on the table to reduce 56219 by $20,000. I believe this was a cut that administration was okay with. So, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Oliver?
Um, so, we've already cut $20,000. Is, is there an additional $20,000?
No. Okay, okay. It's the original 20.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Scared me for a second there. I thought we just cut $20,000 twice.
No. No.
Okay, I'm going to propose some, mine won't be as detailed. I, I typically don't dive into the detail. When I discuss these with you guys, kind of know what it is, and I'll leave it up to you to, to allocate the cut. So, Mr. Oliver, I did this to you last year, snowplow overtime. I'm just looking to reduce that line by $5,000, from 75 to 70.
Which one's that?
Snowplow overtime?
Sure.
It's, it's a roll of the dice, we, you know? So, it's line number 51202. Just looking to, making a motion to reduce that by $5,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay. Item 511, sorry, 51110, which is salaries. Okay, I want to reduce that by, by a million dollars. Because that's just for anticipated wage increases that have not materialized. And I'd be looking to make a motion to reduce that, 5110, by $1 million.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. McGrath, I have... Yes, this is line number 51332. It was sick payoff non-severance. It was a, it was a typo. It's traditionally $9,000, it went in at 90. So I'd be looking to reduce that 51332 by $81,000, to bring it in line with historicals. There a second? Yep, so line number 51332, which is sick payoff non-severance, reducing it by $81,000, and that would bring it in line to what it's been historically.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. 51338, which is E S Y. It's currently budgeted at $750,000. Speaking with the superintendent, we agreed we reduce it by $100,000. We think it's still doable, based on, on salaries for the program, and the transportation for the program. So I'd be looking to reduce 51338 by $100,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I'll go back to that one. Okay, line number, Mr. McGrath, just clarify for me, there's 53214 mentoring. Does that live in two places?
Yes, so, the full ask of the $50,000, 25 is going to be general fund, and we're actually able to grant fund the other 25. So if you were to cut 25 from that line, it does not affect the program. Just the funding source.
Okay, so it's just showing on our books as 50, when it's really 25 on this book?
Yeah, we're able to grant fund that.
All right, so, so, nothing changes for Mentor R I. It's, it's still 50, it's just divided into two different pools. Okay, so I'd be looking to cut 53214 by $25,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah? Please?
So, if you're, so the, the Essar funding, the $25,000, is actually for a different program. That's not directly for the in-school mentoring program. It's for a peer-to-peer mentoring program that we're piloting. So we'd very much like to be able to continue that work, because we're working really hard with the district, especially around transitions for kids. So we would have upperclassmen, as an example, at Tollgate mentoring kids at Winman, so that they would already have those relationships. So when they make the transition up, they will have a person there that they can turn to. And then, next fall, we'll be doing the same thing at Oakland Beach with vets. So that's very much needed in both of those places.
Okay, all right, then, I, I didn't have all the information, okay. I'm going to...
My apologies, I should have been...
We didn't vote, right?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to with... Ms. McGrath? No?
Well, I just want to, I just want to be clear that, so we are still funding the 25 out of Essar. Right, so we're not, the cut is just the general fund piece? Because I, we had it in, it's showing up twice.
Okay.
So it's, you, is it, yes, there's a, yes.
Total is 50, it doesn't change.
Yeah, we...
Just for, for our purposes.
Right, for the general fund.
Different directions.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, all right, so no, I'm not withdrawing my motion. Motion's still on the floor, as, as originally submitted. So just looking to cut that line down to $25,000, which will still keep Mentor R I whole at 50. Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay. Did that already, did that already? Um, hold on. Mr. Oliver, 54201, rubbish disposable services. We have it at $100,000. I know there have been increases and, and some other issues. I would be looking to make a $20,000 cut. Is that really problematic? You can be honest.
Yes, I would say it would be. You know, tipping fees increase yearly, diesel costs, you know, that, that drives up the, the cost.
And is this what the city bills us? Or is this private?
No, it's through the city. If, if we had a private contract, that we would be in the, in the millions.
Okay, all right, because I'm looking, so, so far this year, between encumbered and, and actual, we're at about 60, call it 70 grand, so we're looking for 100.
So I need, I need you to understand that we don't have all our tipping fees in yet. We still finish out to the end of June, and then we pick up with the new billing in July.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do that. Okay. Line 5, 54313, which is repaired non-student trans vehicles. It's budgeted at 50,000. Historically, it's been 35, 33, 40. This year, I'm guessing this must come in late? Because right now, we've only, we've only spent 6,400, so that's probably just going to come in late. We've got it budgeted at 50. So is, is, what vehi, what student trans vehicles are in this? Or what is it?
So what, what it ends up being, it's my maintenance vehicles, the career and tech center buses, stuff like that, that we, we, we repair out of our office.
Now, we, now, some of your vehicles, right, we're leasing them, so the fleet is somewhat newer, right?
Correct, we have 12 new vehicles on, on property right now that we lease, and...
Do we repair those, or is that part of the lease?
No, it's part of the lease purchase. If there's anything wrong with them, they go back, it's like you have a vehicle, yeah.
And, and CTC, I know they just got in, we just approved the purchase order for a new bus, right?
Correct, correct.
So, so how many of the, I guess the point I'm trying to drive at is, you know, how many vehicles are we still responsible to repair versus what we had a year ago, versus two years ago? So, you know, if I was to look to reduce that by $10,000, is that a catastrophic cut to the ability to repair those vehicles?
So, my original ask was 55, we cut 25 out of it already, so that leaves me with 30.
I'd be looking to leave you with 40.
Sure, if you want.
It would be 40?
Yeah, sure.
So, I'm gonna make a motion to cut 54313 just by $10,000. Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one question from Mr. Oliver, is, within that 50,000, is that also, or now 40,000 if this passes, is that inclusive of tires as well, with the servicing?
Well, that, that comes under vehicle maintenance supplies and parts, that would come under that line, which is followed down the line.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All, take a vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is maintenance repair electrical, I was, I know what's in that line under Mr. Oliver, and I know the concern is with the inflation on those supplies. I was just looking to reduce it by $5,000 to a $45,000 line item. 54321. Yeah, so easy to understand. So it would be going from 50 to 45,000? I know a lot of that stuff with conduit and all that other stuff is seen like stupid inflation. I don't know, and I didn't get a chance to look, where those materials are. A lot of materials have come down over the last 10 to 12 months. I'm just not sure if, you know...
Electrical, electric supplies have...
No, not electrical, you're right.
Right, that's what we're stuck at, but yes, I could sustain, sustain that.
So I'd be looking to, looking for, I'm making a motion to reduce 54321 by $5,000.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Oliver, I'm really not picking on you, but you've been through this before and you know. Okay, 54322 is maintenance repair HVAC. It's budgeted $120,000, and I was looking to reduce it by 10. Now I know we've, in the last year and a half or so, have spent a lot of money at Vets on some of those units and compressors and stuff like that, so...
That's correct, over the past, historically, we spent about $67,000 last year on repairs for that HVAC system. Need to understand that that's, that just doesn't cover, air conditioning is heating ventilation, so it covers all our buildings if we have a problem.
All of them?
Yes, correct.
All heating?
All, heating, ventilation.
Okay, and you see HVAC, you're just thinking it's a HVAC system?
Yeah, correct.
Alright, so, based on, you know, 22 was 110, 20, oh, you know what, 23? Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scratch that one. Mr. McGrath, don't be mad at me, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna scratch that one. Line number 54405, which is sewage and cesspool, I was just looking to reduce that, Mr. Oliver, by $5,000. I'm not sure if that, I know we have some problems over at Gordon and Green, that area. There's a couple of areas in Vets, I still don't know why the city just doesn't tie us in, you know? We shouldn't have to pay for it, but that's all a conversation for another day.
Sure, I can sustain the $5,000.
Okay, so I'll be looking for 54405, reduction of $5,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. McGrath, I think this is you, 54602, rent/lease equipment vehicles, I would just be looking to reduce that by $2,000. And I think when I went into the object code, I thought I discussed this with somebody, I just don't remember who it was.
Yeah, I believe that one, that's okay.
Yes, it's $2,000, okay, so, I'm making a motion for 54602 to reduce by $2,000. Yep, 54602. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, question from Mr. Oliver, I think this falls under you, 54902, alarm and fire safety. It's at 140,000, and historically it hasn't been that high. But, my understanding is, is even the new fire alarm systems we put in, they're, I want to call them consumable parts, but they're replaceable parts?
Correct, so you have, you have batteries that need to be rechanged, we have to have our annual fire inspection, our quarterly inspections of our fire alarm systems, sprinkler systems. Obviously, with the age of our buildings, we have flow switches that go bad that have to be changed, gauges have to be changed after so many years. So there are a lot of parts and pieces that get swapped out through the course of the inspections.
And so in your opinion, the 140, I was looking to reduce that by 15, you think that's...
I, I would...
Yeah, I would, yeah, that's why I'm asking. So, you took your papers away.
I would, I would, I would have to fight you on that one.
That's fine, that's fine, okay, I will not, I will not touch that one. Okay, so that takes care of that. Mr. McGrath, on 55610, which is tuition, other districts within state? I'm showing a 52,722 reduction there. Was that based on what?
Yeah, we reviewed the current student population for the tail end of the year, and I think we can realize that additional cut.
Alright, so I'd be looking to reduce 55610, tuition, other districts within state, by $52,722.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call a vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item would be 52204, I despise doing this. But it's the, it's the private pension. The ARC is a million six. And I will be looking to reduce that by six and put in a million. Last year, we put in a million four. My understanding is the pension is just about 80% funding. And Mr. McGrath, I believe you said, starting next year, the ARC calculations are supposed to change?
Yeah, there's...
And they should be reduced.
Yes, that's what the expectation is, depending on the market.
Right, and I hate this, I truly do. But I know what we're, what we're gonna face in about two and a half or three weeks. I don't think it's jeopardizing it. Because I think that it's still healthy by everybody's, by any, any objective measure, it's still healthy. So I would make a motion to reduce 52204 by $600,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all, call a vote, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, that's not one, that's a zero. 55809, employee travel, teachers, it's 11,300, I have a $2,500 cut here tonight. Mr. McGrath, did I discuss this with you?
Yeah, the actuals are showing that you could...
Yeah, it was the actuals, right? Okay, so we're looking to reduce 55809 by $2,500. That keeps us in line with the historicals. $2,500.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, call a vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. 56101 is supplies and materials, Mr. McGrath, you and I discussed this, I was looking to reduce that by $18,000? Right, we were okay with that, based on your conversations, okay. So 56101, supplies and materials, it's a million dollar line item, and we're just reducing it by $18,000. 18.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes. Can we just have clarification?
What the particulars are?
Yes.
Okay, I have, Mr. McGrath, I'll ask you to give me a little detail, in the comment I have, it says 3K lab, Landry, 5K Deandrea, 10K Vets.
Yeah, I believe Mr. McCaffrey, you had reviewed the secondary budget, and we had pulled those items.
Those would be the labs that were identified in the budget?
No, these are smaller amounts.
Yeah, these are very small, these are, one is 10, one is 5, one is 3.
We restored the funding for the departments in science, and I believe the other one was tech ed with Deandrea that you mentioned.
Okay, so is that in a different line item?
Yes, we restored this funding with the AP classes, there are certain instructional supplies we would need within that science department, and we also wanted to restore some funding to the tech ed department. The issue there is that the consumables and things of that nature have been depleted, last year we hit them hard.
Right, so, so the 18, has that been reapportioned in other line items to your knowledge? I don't want to, if it hasn't been reapportioned, then it's not something that I would want to cut. But when, like you said, Deandria, whatever that is, or the lab, so if...
What's the price tag on the lab?
3,000, it says lab, Landry.
Yep.
And then it says 5,000, Deandria. And then 10,000 from Vet Supplies.
Yes.
So, so those have gone to other line, those have been funded elsewhere?
They haven't been funded elsewhere, they've been identified as possible cuts.
Okay. Okay, but, and so in your, in your estimation, and I've got to, I've got to kind of defer to you here, so... You know, I'm just not gonna, I'm not gonna do it. I'm gonna withdraw my motion. Because I just think that, I mean, that's gonna impact kids, so... Yeah, so there's no 18K on that. Okay, next line, 56201 is natural gas. Mr. McGrath, I'm looking to reduce that by $150,000. And I think, I mean, we're buying futures, right? So, the price of natural, natural gas is at pre-COVID lows. So, you know, I'm comfortable with this, I'm no energy expert, but, you know, you talk to the energy people.
I mean, we've traditionally stayed around the million dollar mark for that. So, I mean, there's an additional 50 there, and our actuals are in the 100 range, I don't know if you have any disagreements with Kev, but...
I just get concerned about the new systems we are coming online, you know, with Winman and Shermer coming online with more gas demand, you know, that's, that's stuff I worry about, you know?
You know, like, like everything else, there's always a bit of a roll of the dice with this? And believe me, I'm the first to admit that, and if I'm wrong, and I got another year, and you can come and tell me, you know it, you were wrong. Because we spent a million four. Alright, so, again, I am comfortable, and again, I use the, I'll tell you what it is, because I think the city uses the same thing. It's the U.S. Energy Information Administration, so there's a lot of good information, there are all kinds of energy, futures, supplies, storage, and everything else. And natural gas is the one that I'm most comfortable with. So I would make a motion to reduce 56201 by $150,000. Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item, gasoline. Mr. Oliver, most of, this is all you, right? So you had 14,000, 4, 413,200. I was looking to cut that 50,000, but, Mr. McGrath, why would I, why was I looking at that? Because it was 320, the price of gas versus now versus last year? Right? I don't know what, what are we estimating, or building in for a price per gallon gasoline?
I think we were... That puts us at 363, 200.
So this year, so far, we're at 303, released according...
Yeah, so Kev's only part, yeah, Mr. Oliver's only part of that, also transportation has a piece of that. I think we were just looking at actuals and expecting that to kind of fall in, but...
Well, because it is, I think, oh, I have to go back to check, but I thought I checked this, and I, I thought that... I mean, who knows, gas can go up to the roof in a week, and it could drop through the floor in four weeks, because it never, right? So, based on what you think, is 50 too much? Is 50,000 too much of a cut?
No, because that's also the small buses, I believe, only use gas? Right.
Okay, alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion to reduce 56202 by $50,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call a vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Where are we? Next item. Vehicle maintenance supplies and parts, Mr. Oliver, I'm guessing this is all you, right? So it's $50,000, historically, oh Jesus, it's been 70, 70, 45, 30. I was looking to cut 10, but, based on the historicals, I'm not sure that might be a good idea. What part, what vehicle maintenance supplies and parts, are these tied to vehicles?
Yes, all of our vehicles. Correct.
In our lease, are we paying for the parts too?
No, that's covered by the lease purchase, but at the end of the day, we still have vehicles that are under the lease purchase that we still maintain.
Right, so I'm just trying to gauge, you know, so when we're doing it all, it was all parts, right? So now we're leasing vehicles, so we're getting...
There's a reduction in parts, yeah?
Yeah, reduction in parts, so I'm just trying to find out where that equilibrium is. And it's so, if we cut 10, do you think that hamstrings your ability to fix these things?
No, I think I'll be okay.
Okay, alright, so I'd be looking to reduce 56207 by $10,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. This is one that I'm struggling with, because it's fuel oil. So, we're budgeting a half a million dollars, and that's high, that's up. So, I was looking to cut 50,000 from it. But we're not gonna take any oil systems offline next year, right? That's gonna be the following year.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. Women's generators also gonna be...
Diesel powered, right, and that has to run periodically, right?
Right, it will probably have a test cycle of twice a week, Mr. Gotberg.
Is that correct?
Once a week.
Once a week for an extended period of time?
Probably about a two-hour run usually, correct?
Yeah, and so, okay, how many gallons per hour we... Yeah, okay, alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scratch that. 56211 is other. It's 215,000, I was looking to reduce 30,000, and one of the items under the detail was, Mr. Oliver, you're looking to replace the filters for the rabbity of purifiers, right? That you have that in there, in the item code?
Correct.
Yeah, so, and I think you, you said you wanted to replace them in half the units? Is that what it says in the detail?
Yes, that's...
Yeah, they're 95 bucks a piece, right? So I think we bought about 600 or 700 of those things?
Correct.
Right, so I just think that the math in the detail was 90K? So I just think, if we're gonna do half of them at $95 a piece, calling it 300, I was just looking to reduce that by $30,000? Because I think it still covers the half of the units at the $95 per filter kit. Yes, Mr. Gotberg? Oh, we bought 1,300. Alright, so you're, he's replacing 600, right? Alright, so 650 at $95, right? So that is, let me just see. Hold on. I apologize. So that's 60, so that's 61,000, right? So it would be 650 times 95. So that's 61,700, right?
So the cost, the cost of those filters for half the filters was $90,000?
Yeah, I thought that, but I thought that it's 95 bucks, I think it's 95 bucks for a filter.
Per unit, correct.
Yeah, so if we're doing half, we would be using, if we're doing 650 units, we'd need 61,000 and change for those filters, right? If we're only doing half of them.
Correct.
So if you've got 90 in there, 90,000? So if I reduced it by 30, we'd still be covering, I'll reduce it by 25, and give us a little pad, to be able to cover the kits for at least half of those units. Because that company, it's pretty transparent, it's all online, it's 95 bucks.
No, correct, correct, yes.
Whether we buy them or, you know, although it'd be cool if we can negotiate with them, okay. So I would be looking to reduce... I'll be looking to reduce 56211 by $25,000.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm not quite sure we can. You can come and see us when we're done, though. Oh, no, well, I, I would defer to Mr., Mr. Oliver, but I doubt we would do that, I think we would, you know, we would have to make those accommodations, that's why I asked for five thousand dollars. Mr. Gothberg? So we just have to make sure that we, we don't keep them on when the day's done, right? We should just turn them off when we leave the room, when, when school's over, okay? Alright. Okay, did we? We got a second, okay. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none, call of vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Really, Mr. Oliver, I'm really, really almost done here. Five six two one eight is electrical supplies, we've got it budgeted at, we had it originally at eighty, it was to seventy. Is this, is this the one where you're really concerned about the inflation and the cost of those items?
Correct.
Electrical supplies?
Correct.
So, so we've got seventy, I was looking to cut it fifteen to fifty-five, but is fifty-five probably too low? It's too low. Okay. Alright, I will keep that where it is, I won't touch it. Okay. Five six five oh one, technology-related supplies, you are off the hook, Mr. Oliver. I think this is Dr. Taylor, right?
No, it's me.
Oh. Alright, I, I was gonna recommend twenty-one five, and my, the comment in, in the, in the cell that I had after talking to Mr. McGrath was that twenty of it was from Chromebook parts, and fifteen hundred was from Tollgate cartridges.
Yes, that's me. So, yeah, that's okay, so, as I mentioned earlier, we started two years ago, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for Chromebook parts. We've made it down to one twenty, and I think that if we cut twenty, and we make that budget a hundred, certainly, we'll need the support of the community, and the students, and the families to help make sure Chromebooks don't get broken. But I think that's a good goal, and especially as I explained earlier to Mr. Galligan's question, how we're reusing those parts and trying to cut our costs that way. So I think that's a reasonable goal, and as a community, that will be our goal.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I will put my motion forward to reduce five six five zero one by twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call of vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is five seven two oh two, building improvements. I want to reduce that line item by a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and reason being is, there's two major projects in there, the roof at the Vex, Vet's Annex, and a potential Greenwood boiler. Both of those, we could do with bond funds. So I would like to reduce that from the building improvements line, and we would move that to bonded work. The Greenwood boiler is still a question mark, but, Mr. Gothberg? Okay, and we get reimbursed on that, too, so. Okay, terrific. So it's, it's a very doable reduction, okay. So motion is five seven two oh two to reduce by a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. From five seven two oh two. The original amount was two hundred and seventy-three, it'll be eighty-eight thousand when it's done. Just looking for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Five seven three oh five is equipment, and I've got a thirty-five hundred dollar proposed reduction, that just says cut from secondary. Mr. McGrath? Next year, I'll take more detailed notes. Five seven three oh five, three thousand, five hundred dollars. And that thing needs bigger print, too. My God, it's microscopic.
I can read it fine.
That's probably a big, a lot of objects underneath that.
Yeah, I'm trying to look to see, I think, I don't know if, Mr. McCaffrey, if this was one of the ones that we had looked at together.
It's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar line item, I'm not, I'm confident three thousand, five hundred dollars isn't, isn't outrageous to check if you need it.
You heard, you heard it first. I just wanted to check to see if it was under secondary, if something jumped out at me.
Yes, oh, Mr. McCaffrey says he's fine with it, okay. Okay, alright, so I'm looking, I'm making a motion to reduce five seven three oh five by three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, call of vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, five seven three oh nine, technology-related hardware. Mr. Galligan has already, I, I was gonna propose to cut seventy-five thousand out of that line. So Mr. Galligan has already proposed twenty-five and change. So I'd be proposing forty-nine thousand dollar cut from that. And Mr. McGrath, we have a comment in there, says thirty-four hundred or something?
Yeah, that was, thirty-four hundred dollars was in Kevin's line, that was the two computer lines you had in there, and then the other items were, Mr. Taylor was looking at the notes we had.
Yes, so, my portion of the fifty-seven three oh nine, I think Mr. Galligan covered in his proposed cuts. I think the rest is secondary labs that were popped in there.
Okay. So, so these are the labs that are in?
Veterans.
Correct. So, Mr. McGrath, is, I'm just, refresh my memory. The, the two labs, with respect to the allocation, would this be one of the things that the city was gonna look to do what they did last year?
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, so they wouldn't want us to take those out. Okay, so I'm, we'll just leave that line item where Mr. Galligan left it. Okay. Five seven three one one. I was looking to reduce it, it's a million, almost two million dollar line item, I was looking to reduce it by fifty-four thousand, four twelve. And, Mr. McGrath, we have a comment here that says Prometheans.
Yes, I think that, talking to Mr. McGrath, I think that comment is incorrect, as that is a five seven three oh nine technology hardware item, Promethean boards. But of the five seven three one one, the portion that I could, after, over the last week, talking to some of these companies, getting some, you know, negotiations down, I could cut about thirty thousand from my end. I don't know where the other twenty-four of your note is coming from.
Yeah.
We found it.
So five seven three one one for the elementary is, I support the elementary library programs, the Destiny software through Rhode Island Link, that's how we take our books out, and the Web Path Express. One is twenty, and one is three five five zero.
Okay, so, one of, one is, one, you said one was twenty K?
Yep. So it's a total of twenty-three, five, five, seven.
So was, is that your stuff in here?
I'm in five, five seven three one one.
Right, so, that's in the, the total that I'm looking to cut.
Yes.
Right, so if, if I, Mr. Galligan already took fifty-three hundred out of it, out of that line item.
Right.
So I would reduce my fifty-four by the fifty-three, right? So, I just want to make sure that we're okay.
Well, we did call, and they said that these were gonna be kind of standard prices for next year, so, that's why we left that total in there.
Okay. So, am I okay to cut it? That's what I'm asking.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I also have twenty-seven thousand that can't be cut out of that line.
Right, but there's, there's a million nine, so I'm just, I'm, the fifty-four, Mr. Galligan cut fifty-three hundred, right, so. Five seven three eleven. So, alright, so I'll take one at a time, so Dr. Taylor, you're okay with, well, with thirty?
Correct, just to sum it up, I, I believe that fifty-three hundred from Mr. Galligan was traversa, and I'm okay with thirty-four twelve, thirty thousand, four hundred and twelve, and then the rest from Ms. Coseno. Oh, you don't want to go.
I have the biggest part of this.
Yeah, but you're not, but you're not-
Budget line, I believe.
But I don't think you're part of it.
Well, I have seven hundred thousand dollars worth of it.
Yeah, I'm, I was only looking overall, to cut fifty-four thousand dollars. That's it, so, because the curriculum-related stuff is critical, I mean, everything's critical. So, so right now, I'm at thirty-five, seven, twelve, because I don't think that includes Ms. Coseno's stuff, but you're telling me I shouldn't. Okay, that's fine, alright. So, thirty-five, seven, twelve would be what I'd be looking to reduce that line item by. Okay, so I'd be looking to reduce five seven three one one by thirty-seven, I'm sorry, thirty-five thousand, no, no, thirty thousand, four hundred and twelve, because he's already taken fifty-three hundred. So thirty thousand, four hundred and twelve to reduce line item five seven three one one. That's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. The, the software, are, do we overestimate on the software? Or are we removing so, instructional-based software?
I'm gonna defer to Dr. Taylor on that, because that's all him, that whole thirty thousand is him.
Yes, between the two specific items, between the budget prep, is that if we break it down into the individual lines, where we have Aspen Central Registration, we had cut a small piece of that off that we don't use to bring that cost down for the district. The second item, which we were able to save fifteen thousand dollars off of, is G-Suite Enterprise. Now, the reason for that is we had a three-year contract that gave us a fifty percent off coupon, for a lack of a better term, so it was sixty thousand, district paid thirty. So we budgeted sixty, but they have a new pricing structure coming up for this coming year, which would cost us forty-five, because we have to match it with our enrollment number. So I was able to take fifteen off of there, and an additional seven to get the majority of that.
So there's no instructional impact or impact to the curriculums?
No, we didn't touch Ms. Coseno's stuff at all, took it out. Yeah, or Dr. Schultz, no. It's all that guy over there. Okay, alright, so, so the motion is to reduce that by thirty thousand, four hundred and twelve, it's been seconded, right? You had a question, okay, any other discussion? And hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm really almost done here now. Five eight one oh one, professional organization dues and fees, just be looking to reduce that by three thousand dollars. I think that was a Rhode Island Association of School Principals thing, at Tollgate, would we be cool with that?
Hi, that's me.
That's you?
Yep, so five eight one oh one, I am responsible for the memberships and fees for us to belong to Riasp, the Rhode Island Association of School Principals, I also pick up the tab for Superintendent DeBrook, Assistant Superintendent McCaffrey, Dr. Schultz, Dr. Taylor, and then the second, that's a total of three nine eight zero. And then I also pick up the tab for all nineteen school principals to belong to Riasp. We pay their fees, and they are going up this year, I did talk to Bob Littlefield, they're going up, so that went up to eighteen six.
Okay, so the entire line item is one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, so it's gonna be more, more dues and fees included in there. So, I'm just not sure where the three thousand dollars that I was looking to cut was coming from.
It's in Tollgate, because it's doubled.
Oh, because it's now, it's moving into-
Yes, it's being picked up, right.
Alright, so-
So we don't need the item that's in Tollgate, you can take that.
Okay, I just duplicated, okay, I get it, thank you, you told me that first, alright. So I would be looking to cut five eight one oh one by three thousand dollars, which is just a duplicate zone.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, call of vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I, I wanna double check, but I believe that's everything I have. Mr. McGrath, I need from you, you know, this is like a game show.
So, can I, I just want to compare, because Mr. Jerry and I have a three thousand dollar difference, we can just compare that to make sure we have this squared away?
Yeah, please do.
I want to make sure we got everything.
Because, because my next, my, my next step would be breakage.
Yep.
Right, we always put a breakage number in, and, and I think I'm comfortable with the number. That I want to propose. We, we could take, while you guys tally that, we can just take like a five-minute recess. So, yeah, give you, I'm gonna put you on the pressure, just take, take your time, so we'll take a five-minute recess, thank you. Okay, thank you. Before I get to the grand total from Mr. McGrath, I would like to make one more motion on five, seven, two, oh, two, which is building improvements. I had originally moved to reduce it by a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, that two projects would be the boiler, greenwood, and the vets annex roof. The cost for the vets annex roof was overestimated, so I would like to make a motion to add forty thousand dollars back into five, seven, two, oh, two.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, Mr. McGrath, with all that done, where are we?
With tonight's additional cuts, we've cut an additional one point nine, five, three, five, sixty out of the budget. So the total expenses for the district, as it stands right now, would be one hundred and eighty-six million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, one eighty-six, five eighty-two, right?
Yep, correct.
Okay, so we haven't discussed breakage yet. So typically, breakage has been, well, forget that. When I looked at the retirements we've had this year, and resignations we had this year, and based on Ms. Jerry, where you said we were kind of trending towards when we were, where a teacher retires and we replace, I'd be looking for us to put one point two five million into breakage. Mr. McGrath, that's the number we had talked about, right?
Correct.
And it's a little higher than we would typically do, and I will admit that, a little concerned, but you know, we look at the, we'll know what the final number is for this year. And with all due respect to these teachers who should have been able to retire years ago and couldn't, you know, there's a big contingent of them that are approaching that finally they can retire after forty-seven years teaching, or fifty-nine, we had on last week, so. You know, I'd like to put a million two in breakage, and then again, when we go to the city, we can always revise again in January, in June, correct? So I, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, correct, yep, I built in a million, so it would be an additional two fifty from what we have currently, so.
Okay, so do you need me to make a motion for what, just the full one point two five? Or just the two fifty?
Either way, the numbers that you had had the million, so the two fifty would be in addition, so you could either make a motion for the, that the breakage number will be one point two five million, or you could.
I'm going to make a motion to just add an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to breakage.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There being no other, future monthly meetings, monthly school committee, Tuesday, May ninth, it's at Warwick Veterans. Thank you, Tolgate, we've appreciated it, we're going back to vets. And before I move to adjourn, I would just like to wish Mr. Gothberg a happy fiftieth birthday for the twentieth time. So, happy birthday, Mr. Gothberg.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, good enough, all right.
Mr. Chair, do you have to, I think you have to do a vote on the budget as a whole to prove it as the school committee adopted.
All right, so may I have a motion to accept the budget as amended this evening?
Second.
Any discussion?
The final total, was it the one eighty-six, five eighty-two, or is it one eighty-six, five eighty-two plus two fifty now?
It's, it's one eighty, it's one eighty-six, five eighty-two, right, Mr. McGrath, and then total breakage is one point two?
Correct.
So it'll be one eighty-six, five eighty-two, whatever, minus one point two five million. So what's that grand total, Mr. McGrath?
One eighty, one eighty-seven, three, three, two, one, thirty-two, thirty-seven.
Wouldn't you go the other way with breakage?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Breakage, no, breakage should be reduced.
Yeah.
So it was one eighty-six, eight fifty, I'm sorry, one eighty-six, five eighty-two, right? So that had, did that have a million of the breakage in it? And then we added two fifty to it?
Correct.
All right, so, so with one eighty-six, five eighty-two, less the two hundred and fifty thousand? Right, Tim?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure we have everything.
Yep, just make sure, just give me, because we don't have one, one grand total.
One eighty-four, two thirty, sorry, one eight four, two, two, three, three eighty-nine.
Excellent, okay. So there's a motion, is your second, Mr. Galligan?
Second, and no further questions.
Any other questions, comments on the budget? Okay, hearing nothing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There being no other business before this committee, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you, everybody, thanks for your patience.
Thank you.